... Board of Education, special meeting at the Round Lake High School theater. At eight hundred North West Road Drive, Round Lake, Illinois, September twenty-fourth, twenty-thirteen, and seventeen minutes. For roll call please.
Well, there's Mr. Daniels. Ms. Martin. Here. Ms. Bernina. Here.
I'm Connie Collins with superintendent of Round Lake District, one sixteen, and would like to welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out to find this is our first community forum this year. And we are focused on, wanted to take this opportunity to share information regarding the work that has been done by a design committee. And this has to do with looking at the high school and what the needs are here at Round Lake High School. We know that we are over capacity and we want to share where our current reality is and take a look at how we move forward. So this is the first of our community forums will be about sharing information. It will be a one-hour presentation and then we will have thirty minutes for questions and answers. And we are going to have the presentation done by Mrs. Charlie Johnson, who is the representative of our architectural firm, Fannie Howie, and also Mr. Bill Johnston, who is our assistant superintendent for business and finance. And so we invite Charlie to come at this time.
Good evening, and for all the teachers that I've got to see all day today, best to see you again. This has been a long process for the district where we have started back in two thousand and ten. We were hired as the district directorate and we did a facility master plan. And after the goals established by the board with a facility master plan, we had the high school on the high priority. After the facility master plan was completed, we had the high school on the high priority. Even today it's at high priority. The process, we call staffs, to get to new construction, typically a project, starts with a vision. And we did a visioning session, a roles, goals and role session with the board, defining what success looked like for the master plan. You've repeated that process for the project, projects looking at here for the high school. The research, the research piece of it is evaluating the building, conversations with the staff. The research doesn't really stop. For those of you in education, you know, who developed their plan, continue to review and evaluate it. This is where we're back again, reviewing and evaluating all of the work that has started three years ago and brings us to today. We've been throughout our process engaging the community. We took the master facility plan out in two thousand and eleven to all five communities. We've taken it to community forums like this one. We've continued that so people are aware of not only the process, but also where we impressed too. For a project that comes to funding, where we're kind of, as Dr. Paul's pointing out, is looking at developing the design because due to funding, the design was determined to be an addition to this building. And so they, the board has instructed us and the administrators and staff, and the design committee, let's see some members of the committee, thank you for those, that we designed this so we affirmed the scope and the cost. So that's, that's been our charge by the board. And we continue to hold it. There's data from the needs assessment and there were four major components of the, of the master facility plan. The physical assessment, the energy, the educational assessment, as well as demographics and taking demographics aligning with curriculum, aligning with curriculum and the needs. And what you're seeing here is if all of the buildings are in a tight capacity, the tight terms of space, and what I mean by that is this graphic, and I don't think you can see it or remember, this represents the square footage per child in each building. And this represents the national average. It's pretty easy to say this has three digits and it says two. So on average, there's more space in an average room than most of your rooms. We also identified limited, we also identified these life safety concerns, the quality of the, as things came out of the assessment as well. The enrollment and utilization go hand in hand. Utilization at the high school or at a high school is never a hundred percent because it's, it's pretty close because typically what you have is when students move from one unit to classroom, they might have a social studies classroom in the same spot for next period. So there were large utilization, utilization factors go down as you get into elementary schools. This block represents the elementary schools in the district. This block is the middle school and this is the high school. And what this chart shows is total capacity by numbers of teaching stations, places where instruction can happen and against what's optimal for that building. And you can see this is, this is the same value, that's four ninety. This is four ninety, that's optimal, typically we could use a hundred percent, but your enrollment at the D E C is at four ninety-eight-five, so you can see it's ninety-nine percent utilized. Does that make sense? It's just this number, divided by this number is the value. It's pretty tight in a lot of these spaces, but the real tightness comes when you get to the high school. And you can see the utilization percentage here, that's a hundred and fifty-six percent utilized. And I can, these values is the total capacity of the high school, teaching storage spaces is about fifteen hundred students. Possible, you'd like to have it at thirteen hundred kids in that, in this, in a building this size, you currently have two thousand and forty-nine students in a building this size. So you can see where we're over, or maxed out in terms of space when it comes to, to the high school. It was also affirming what a lot of people knew, there are limited resources, both in land as well as budget. The financial picture was, was always a picture. And the board took what we gave in terms of long-range plans and qualified them by saying it was a needs versus a want, or life saves is the term where you had to do it. So you've got have to do, need to do, and then would like to do. Then we came, I'm going to fill this up.
As Charlie indicated, that it was last April, the board came back together and finalized the long range of the goal. And as a result of that, they had several goals. One, the main goal was to alleviate the overcrowding of the high school while improving the education environment. The second goal was to do that without costing our community any additional dollars and additional tax dollars. So those were two of the goals that the board gave us, and that's what Charlie has been working, the constraints he's been working with. Where that become important is the state imposes certain debt capacity limits on school levels. And our, we're using that to factor in the additional debt service that we can raise. And so that is the limitations that we have been operating on to date.
And again, for those of you who live here all day, these goals seem very clear, you know, see them all every day. Alleviate the overcrowding and sort of the educational environment. That's number one. How do we do that? With, I'll go through the goals first, then we'll go through how to do it. The, the board also wanted to engage the community, community forums. Community forums is a large part of presenting the output of this design committee comes with. And setting up a design committee was part of that, that goal as well. Having community input and I'm, and stay within the budget capacity, design for total project budgets with a large dependency. And then also factoring in total operational costs, knowing that you add teaching stations, you have, so that's, this is all goals that the board has decided. The design goals, which were given to the committee, was to add classroom additions, predominant in classrooms, we'll talk specifically about the program. Design with student-centered focus, and that means providing quality daylight, quality indoor air, thermal comfort, and that means your temperature range is not too hot, cold, and that the accoustics are appropriate for teaching and learning. And delivery of anytime, of twenty-first century learning, and the board defined that as anytime, anywhere, learning and technology edge. And then aesthetically appropriate, how it all comes together, and then fit with the values and cultures of this community. Maximize value and to be sustainable. And the sustainability component is, is longevity, being able to grow with you to operational costs be, be conservative so that if the building isn't the first cost, the cheapest it can be to begin the back question. And here's a good example. The lower your initial costs for this equipment of materials, typically the higher the operation cost is that, the higher the operational costs will be at the beginning for, for a piece of equipment that's cheapest installed today, it might have, typically has a higher operational cost. And on the same, other end of the spectrum, you want to not be so expensive equipment that you can't pay for itself with no reason for all of it. So there's a sweet spot, it's a little where these two lines got to come together and get a maximum value. I don't know how I did that, I'm just going to fill this one. This is the design committee. It's a big committee, but it also includes two students, includes community members, community members. Do you have a buddy? No. It includes community members, includes faculty, includes finance, it includes Dr. Collins and board members on here. So it's a, it's a large committee, but it also has a largest, largest, largest committee. This is the program of spaces as defined to date. And I say that only because we just had a series of meetings all day today, where we met with the teachers of each department representing here. The largest component of the additions, addition, additions, is the additional teaching stations. This represents twenty general ed classrooms. There are also four science labs. And then you have P E space, the combination space, some music, professional storage facilities there, digital art, and then self-contained special ed classrooms. These spaces down here, particularly these, this is, we need to improve the cafeteria serving lines, and we have to increase the cafeteria in size to accommodate the number of students that are coming through. So there's space allocated to that. And then this is mechanical warming technology, circulation, these gray boxes represent circulation. And those may change as we completely define the program, but identifying all the spaces and allocating those costs or footers is how we got to, is how we're working within that budget. And again, some of this work, for those of you on the design committee, will look different from the last time we saw you because we continue to evolve, we get input from teaching and learning and staff, and again, there's changes that are going on to here. This is the high school as it sits today. You're in this, this is relative. This is a part of the discussion, the second design committee meeting was how to organize the classrooms. This is, this is typical, I would say, where you have cubicle style boxes in classrooms divided by a hard wall separated. The design committee kind of went with more collaborative, some, some flexibility in space. And that's part of the charge of design, where it's something that lasts and endures in changes with time. This is, again, keep in mind, there's some discrepancies between the program and this because we're in transition. But essentially, we're looking at additions to the building, mostly because it makes sense programmatically based on the type of rooms. But the largest portion would be out the back where the mobiles currently are, the four mobiles that are back there. This would be eight to twelve classrooms, two-story addition. This is current, we're looking at again, nothing's really in stone, if you notice the all mobiles, they don't have phones, they're mine. With, this is mechanical, electrical spaces, some music slash visual formalities spaces here. This is probably going to become a P E space, a lab, a machine now, that's easy. The other component to the design is to alleviate some of the stress points and circulation within the building. And anybody trying to get from the A wing to P E or, or performing arts, you'd know how, how long that could take you, especially going through the building, it's a challenge. So you can see these large circulation places, this is a common space, it's programmed out to open up a lofted space to alleviate choke point here. We're also, what you're seeing here is a corridor that doesn't currently exist, with these two levels here. So we're trying to address some of the circulation as well. Again, this is the second story here, and you can see we're making connection of the second story as well. This is the kitchen space, this is an additional user space, which we're probably capturing internally. We're also showing addition at the front of the building. This is also a two-story addition. It's hard to envision because the building is quite teared as it come down. There's also a, a science stepway, again, that's programmed, we're showing it here because these are all science labs here. Does that make sense to be adjacent to them? And that's that second story of the, 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 it sees increased circulation to alleviate some of those choke points. These are images that we showed the design team to get them thinking about what circulation could look like. This is an example of a common in a building in Zionsville. This common, this is at the bottom of the step, it's also a connector piece. But this stair is used as a gathering space, it can also be used as a place to protect, like if there was a classroom function there as well. So trying to think spaces can be utilized for more of these single functions. And that includes your circulation, if you want to maximize, again, the value of what we're doing. And, and this is upstairs from that same spot, it was upstairs component. Again, these are just examples to get the, the design team thinking differently than the, you know, these current spaces. One of the things you're seeing here, you can see layers of transparency, there's a lot of glass here and a lot of light. You want to be conscious of where you're allowing light, which side of the building, and what functions inside those rooms want light. Computer lab is a best thing for a lot of light, a lot of weather. And maybe some of the special needs, self-contained spaces, they'll get so much light depending on the level of needs of the students. But there are opportunities to bring light far into the building, if we want to put it up. This is the, the schedule that we're working on for this stage. And for those of you in construction, you might be familiar with the basis of construction, thematic design, design development, construction documents, bidding and negotiation in the construction. Well, you can see we're not even going past design development. Design development is the stopping point for our work so that we can give the board enough information to determine that the scope is appropriate and well defined, and that the budget is in line with that scope. So that's the exercise that we're working on now. We've started, we, we have had two design committee meetings, we'll have those the third next Monday. And we've had several meetings in the interim with user groups to further define space. And then we will be making a recommendation to the board in December that would say this is, this is the plan, whatever, the plan and programs and scope of work that, your team has told us, and its cost, and then the board will take it from there. And that's, I have a presentation for a dozen hours.
Very good. We're ready to take any questions from the audience. We have a couple of individuals who have microphones that they would bring around, so if somebody raised your hand, they would be more than happy to bring a microphone and Bill, Charlie, that would be involved in the images I've shown here.
Hi, I'm a parent of a student here at Round Lake High School, and a student coming in next year from Round Lake Middle School. This looks great. You're saying in December, you're going to have or take the decision and make an approval, basically. When will this be executed then? If you guys approve it in December?
There are several steps that have to follow. The board has to, if you remember back last December, as we were concluding some of the facility master plan program, the board, the board thought about going to referendum. We have to go to referendum before we can bar all the money. So the board thought about it last spring, it felt needed more time. And so if the board approves moving forward in December, we have to go to referendum in March. And then you have to have a successful referendum before you can go out and bar all the money. So there's several steps that still have to take place before this gets to that point. Board approval, and then community support via referendum.
So what's coming forward in December is the work of the design committee, so that's focused on the design. And so basically, the work that the committee is doing, the information that's provided from the value of the UJ books, et cetera, is all being incorporated by the architect. And they're continuing to get information, as Charlie indicated, the design committee will be meeting again, is it next week? Next Monday? And so they will continue to take information that we hear here today, as well as any other information that she has received, and we will continue to incorporate that to see what this is looking like. And then the goal is that by December, that all of this will have been incorporated and taken to the board to say, this is the design based on the input of the board, to either say, get your name to the design.
Correct. And the, to, to, if all of those steps, as Mr. Johnston pointed out, hang and ask the board, said this is what we do, the committee said do it, it could be a year to getting two years, over two years of construction time, starting with, with the approval heard, let's say, March. We complete the documents, finish those other bases, essentially, we focus on the construction documents, the documents, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, take that, complete it, and then start rebuilding the whole as soon as the weather allows us. Thank you, Kevin.
That's one of my aspects, we asked for a complete timeline, assuming success at each phase. So folks who are here, you know, we're realistically talking about, we're having the revision of the project.
Yeah, I would think based on the current complexities and revisions that we use by for totalization before the start of school twenty sixteen, that you'd have trouble. By twenty fifteen, you have, get rid of the mobiles, we should finish enough to get rid of the mobiles, remove kids, continue the building, actually, try to go around.
Wow, that sounds really ambitious.
Yeah, it's, it was, yeah.
I mean, just the construction point, that sounds really ambitious.
Yeah, but twenty sixteen, yeah, it's, it's the target. It's, it could be, and again, we'll know more as we develop the new complexities of it, but that's the target that we're working for.
Yeah. So I have part two, because Ashley's not here, and she has stressed multiple times at many of the forums, her concern is coming in as a freshman, that there's not going to be enough room. What are we going to do to make room for our students in the high school because we're already at capacity?
We're over capacity.
Right, so you have a class of eighth graders that's probably your largest coming in next year. And if you're already at your maximum, the seniors that are leaving aren't going to leave that much of a dent for our incoming freshmen. She's worried where she's going to go to high school next year. Are we putting more mobiles on the property? Are we going to like make an arrangement that if we can't fit them here, they're going to go to another high school? How's that going to work next year with our freshmen? Because this plan's not going to be in effect if it passes for two to three years.
It takes time, and Bill, because we've been, we've been looking at, you know, projections regarding our demographics and what the numbers are to look like, coming down the road, and not to say that this is an exact science, but it does give us a pretty good indication, and even as we've taken a look at historically, what our numbers have looked like over the years, and so I wanted to ask Bill, because we had a couple of demographic studies that was done to let us know what our projections look like going down the road.
A year ago, we had an updated demographic study. It was presented about this time last year, maybe November of last year. And it showed over the next ten years, there will be gradual increase in enrollment. Enrollment district-wide will go up slightly over the next two or three years, and then what gained over the next three years sort of moves to where we have a net increase of about two hundred students over the next ten years. This year, what we, use those projections that were done a year ago for the enrollment this year. We are a little behind in our, what we're projecting, about a hundred and twenty students at this point. So when it took into consideration the movement of the eighth graders, as well as other community factors, and it looks like, and we'll reevaluate it once we get the enrollment, the official enrollment next week, to see what the impact will be next year. And we'll, if it does show that the incoming freshmen are going to be higher than what was anticipated, we'll have to look at different options to accommodate that. Those that currently have high school students, we do have dual schedules. And from what we've experienced this year, while the high school enrollment may be slightly higher than what was projected, we haven't heard anything from the high school that they haven't been able to accommodate all the students. So it looks like right now, whatever the high school is doing, to give the kudos for doing it, the students are all being served within the current capacity.
I think what she was asking me is, a place where we had that problem, where I work, how, or will they keep that in mind and really work on it early enough to really ease the incoming freshmen's minds to know if it wants to be a scheduled for them, or how the board's breaking apart from launches? Because I can completely understand her concern of where am I going to sit? Where am I going to have a locker? And are there going to be obstacles to the trajectory? And that, I can understand where her fear is coming from, very realized, without overcrowding.
And we'll start as soon as probably November, October, first of the high school, they go, again, updating enrollment projections, using the same formula that we've been going to see just where we are to have a decision for the high schools, hopefully be the kind of study for next year.
Other questions?
They've been updating the mechanicals in the building now, putting air conditioning and heating and updating stuff. Is that being worked with to tie in the new thing to make it all one system, or are they just...
they just adding to the system that's already there?
We had a meeting this morning, the first of many, we've had our engineers, also teams of Charlie, the maintenance staff. And the one sure answer is the dollars in this project don't include updating the entire system, but we will make an effort to maximize dollars that is currently spending or allocated to upgiving systems, to increase the size of that unit, to accommodate additional square footages. But that, it's, it's infancy right now, so I can't say how much or how little we've been touching, but I will say we're working very closely with this, with maintenance staff to determine what was the optimal, and the most value-added position we'd be in for all of the additions, as well as any spaces that we touch.
Now, the plan during, is that solar, or any of that kind of stuff, the health paradigm is long-term possible. I know it's expensive to start up, and I'm already a bit way ahead of the, if there's a cost.
There are, there are every effort possible to optimize the system, to make it the lowest initial cost without compromising along life trun, life cycle cost. And that's a, that's a discussion, it's not a decision we make, it's a discussion with staff, particularly Charlie and his folks that's been here, who talk about what's the, what's the system that is made use to, what's the optimal system for terms of different types of spacing, and, you know, what are we looking at in terms of sizes and where that goes. So it's a, it's an ongoing discussion, and we have just begun to thought of. So to answer your question, I have, it's, it's very infancy. I can tell you, in my previous discussions with Charlie, for many other issues, he has big plans, and we're working to optimize where he wants to go, where he knows he is, replacements he's going to have to make, how he can make his additions the most effective. That is entirely a part of the charge. Okay, so, and I'm not an engineer, but we can state the conditions.
No, no, we are, you know, we're fortunate, this year, there have been some grants, in fact, from the state, and some matching grants that Charlie has written and has taken advantage of, and in fact, there's another round of matching grants for just some maintenance pieces, et cetera, that we're getting ready to go after all, so that helps us, in some of the work that we're doing, to try to get to this point where, you know, there's a major construction that's being done, and so I really want to commend him, and he's always looking at how he gets some work done, you know, without having to spend a lot of money, and then get in and out. Other questions?
If, if this project had to, and then everything over, what do you have to do with those mobiles, those that you had, that you had shut after, yeah?
You're not about it.
They're in terrible shape.
You guys are already in the morning, so are you guys, where's this current, is cool?
I would leave that to, for the designers, like, if you want to use that. I know both of you, since you're set for the, like, state communities, and some adjustments are just a five, nine, eleven day, and if I want to, the mobiles go wrong, so I think it's a, the design business, it's like, there you go.
Thanks for the question, we actually had this conversation about, we're looking to see what the capacity concerns are at the other schools. And if there are capacity concerns at schools that don't have mobiles, that might be an option. But this trip of ours also, we gave it that some of the existing mobiles are in pretty bad shape. And if there is no capacity concerns in other buildings, then they may be used to replace the existing mobile at a school that currently hasn't. So we are looking at those options, more than likely, we'll tend to, usually, again, our funding will be very limited, so we don't have an opportunity to go add additional building unless it's going through a, a funding draw, so we'll probably, more than likely, need a mobile, if our own continues to go like it had in last year.
Other questions?
I have a question, and I actually have two. One, is this presentation going to be available for us to view on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
We also have a design committee website set up, and we'll make that link available. It has all the presentations we put together, and you'll see the progression, so you'll have access to look, and see all along, as we continue on the work that we're now deciding.
What was that you were?
It is, you go to the round link website, and then you'll have a link to that. And it should be out, so I'm not.
Just want to make sure everybody watched the whole, I mean, you know.
Go to the round link website, and there's also the other opportunities. Again, one of the things that we want to make sure that the community is involved, the community get input, so there's opportunities for logging, or whatever you want to call it, for community members to write comments, or questions, or advice for us on that website that will be reviewed and will be addressed throughout this process.
My second question, just, I'm alumni of this school, so, the old gym, has it ever been discussed to just take that away and make that classrooms, and looking into a possible field house to replace that gym? Because I know that gym is never cold, it's always extremely hot, it's, it's outdated. I know they put new floors in a couple of years ago, but is it an option to look at? Would that actually give us more classrooms, and then find room for a field house?
The master facility plan that was done addressed a lot more spaces than even this program addresses. In the master facility plan, it included a lot more gym spaces, and a lot more renovation to existing spaces, it included a lot more offices and, um, parking spaces, currently with this program, with this budget. As to that specific space, there's a lot of discussion of what needs to happen there, and we're still discussing that, I would say, because the P E department, and, and other, that kind of, some of the department have really expressed the lack of space for just P E. So turning those spaces into classrooms, we have to find more space for P E, and that, that might be fine, and I'd say that's great, because the last one, we're kind of working through that. So there's been a lot of discussions. The field house concept wasn't explored much past the master plan, because of the greatest need being in this building and with this building, and again, the board goal of maximizing dollars for teaching and learning spaces, and this program identifies thirty-three of those. So in terms of numbers of students, that, that equals, like, seven hundred and fifty kids. So, again, go back to the math, how many kids could fit in this building? Thirteen seventy, you have two thousand and fifty today, we're building a building for two thousand one hundred and twenty. The additional spaces, seventeen seventy. Anybody else have any questions? All right.
As, as we talked, we are planning, at the, at the conclusion of the design, we're planning to have another community forum to give an update of what that final design before it goes to board looks like, sometime in that same timeframe, probably the first week of December, which the board hopefully will review at that same time, in that same timeframe as well. So there's going to be an opportunity, again, the goal is to keep the community informed, get the feedback from the community, and then update them as we can, through the various modes that we indicated in there. So we just hope that you stay involved, and let us know some, some suggestions that you have, and we want to keep you informed as well.
You could also share what's going on with individuals in the community, their needs to set. Most people are not here, and so let them know about the website, and where they can get the information, you could also share the information with them, this is a very big decision that needs to be made for this school, this professor's time, and we want to hear from the community, and we want to know that decisions are being made, are being supported by the community. Anything else?
I wouldn't have known anything about it, except through emails, if you sound, if I go emails.
Yes.
That's a very bright idea, because I wouldn't have known anything about it, I hope you don't, that's in that. So that is, we're having some people on, and we're.
We email, to matters home, we, I do Facebook, let's see, also, the bomb blast has gone out more than once on the website, other ways, other ways that we have shared.
The flyer went off school and should have gone home.
Right.
Yeah, we got that.
We put flyers in businesses around town, the grocery stores, as well as other businesses, libraries, parks, so we really, yeah, so we try to do a lot to get through it out, so we, you know.
And this is the first step. If we proceed, we're going to need the community support for the second step, and we want to keep you informed, and we want to tell science we support us.
Also, on the school marquins, we have, so, if there are no other questions, Lori, one more question.
Actually, just a comment, I know I'm a minority where I live, but through all of your publication at Ron Lake Library, and I'm in Lakeville Library, this is, I have never been in Ron Lake Library, so you might want to.
Thank you for sharing that, and, and, and we'll, 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 please, that's enough.
Have you guys been on the, behind by, or?
We will, I'm not sure.